Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our committee of the whole meeting. So commissioners, we have 10 items before us on our formal agenda. And then we have two special briefings. So we'll, depending on timing, we may just end up staying in here during that. Then we have Economic Development Project Team. And then after that, we have our second round interviews with city manager candidates this afternoon. So we have a full day. Hopefully, we'll have time to eat in between there at some point. We shall see. So let's get started. I'm assuming it's...
I got you. She's coming.
Okay, okay. We'll get started. So the first one is a resolution to amend the 2018 Public Safety meeting schedule.
So moved.
All right. So Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this? You serve on public safety, right?
Yes, indeed. We have taken the opportunity to take a good hard look at the schedule, but also consider the fact that we want to make it as easy as possible for our public citizens who are now members of the Public Safety to engage. And so we decided to move the time and take the opportunity, hopefully, to feed those who participate. And so...
It's a novel idea.
Yeah, yeah. So we have before us a schedule for Public Safety.
Great. And we will do our best, commissioners, to make sure that we are done with this meeting so that people are not waiting.
Yeah.
That's a goal of ours this year is to stay on time. So any commissioners, any other questions or comments about that?
Just a comment. I think this is wise because history has proven we are too long-winded and many times it doesn't start till 11:30 anyway.
Right.
All right. So I will call the question more quickly then. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Hello? Sorry about that.
It's okay. We just did the first resolution and it passed.
Perfect. All right. That will take us to our second one. That's a resolution designating the Chinese New Year celebration of the World of Winter Festival a special event and permitting the discharge of consumer-grade fireworks.
So moved. Support.
All right. So this is pretty straightforward. I'm so excited to see this come forward. But you want to tell us about this?
Absolutely. We are so excited that this year we're adding a lunar New Year celebration to some of the offerings that we offer here at the city this February. As part of that celebration, they would like to light some firecrackers on the Gillette Bridge.
Firecrackers or fireworks?
Firecrackers.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right.
So I will let Ted Jensen speak to that.
I thought maybe both.
What they're proposing is consumer-grade fireworks. So something you can readily buy on 28th Street or any other fireworks vendor.
So you don't have any fire concerns? No?
Not more than normal.
Oh, dear. Good answer. All right, commissioners, any questions about this?
A comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I want to take every opportunity that's possible to, first of all, thank you because I know you watch out for us with the safety, Ted. But also to remind the public that these consumer-grade fireworks have been, due to a state law change several years ago, are now allowed in the city as they weren't before. So I recently went to an annual meeting at Creston, and the number-one issue that everybody put their little dots on was complaints about consumer-grade fireworks. And I just want the public to know that this is not something that the city approved. This is something that states superseded us on. So every year around the Fourth of July, we get lots of complaints about them, and I wish there was something we could do, but we cannot. Just note to public. Thanks.
And so we will remind our constituents to call their state reps and their state senators to complain. All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. So hopefully, we'll see everyone down on February 16th.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, coming up. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution authorizing a contract for federal representation services in partnership with Grand Rapids Whitewater.
So moved. Support.
All right. And Karen is here to talk about this. This is something we've talked about in Legislative Committee before bringing it here. And so we'll let Karen talk about it, and then Eric, and then those of us who serve in Legislative, we are welcome to jump in.
Good morning, everyone. This resolution is for federal legislative services. You may recall that the city was represented for many years in Washington, D.C., but we closed out that contract in 2016, and so we've been going without since that time. With the new administration in Congress, it's clear that now is not the time to be without representation in Washington, D.C. Grand Rapids Whitewater has had a very good experience with Potomac Strategic Development Company. So we've developed a partnership approach with Grand Rapids Whitewater for federal legislative services, and we would recommend a joint contract with Potomac. This arrangement would provide federal legislative representation services at a considerable savings over our former contract while simultaneously creating an important strategic partnership. The proposed partnership contract would be $30,000 a year for the city. The city and Grand Rapids Whitewater would be invoiced separately and not responsible for the other party's financial obligations so that we would be able to pursue other priorities on behalf of the city. I recommend this partnership to you because it provides a strong statement regarding our intent regarding river restoration and helps provide a united and coordinated front for seeking federal support. We will enter into a future MOU with Grand Rapids Whitewater for management and construction of the River Restoration Project. This agreement would establish our first formal working relationship with Grand Rapids Whitewater.
All right. Eric, do you want to weigh in on this?
Sure. I support this. We've worked very carefully with Grand Rapids Whitewater to put this together, and I think it's a great arrangement, and we're doing it. We're getting, I think, great representation at a much lower cost than we got it before. So I think it's very important to proceed with this.
So commissioners and Legislative Team, we talked about a couple of things. One, the recent tax bill and the need for us to weigh in on that, especially we had some serious concerns around the historic tax credits and new market tax credits. And then also the need to have a voice when we apply for significant grants like COPS grants or some of the HUD grants we've received, including like the HUD grant we received for Seeking Safety. Having a voice that can help push that through and talk about the importance of those grants and those dollars for our city is important. And so that's some of the conversation that we had at Legislative in support of this recommendation. All right. So Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner O'Connor, you both served. Do you have anything else to add?
Well, I think that using Potomac, I think one of the things we talked about was the fact that we are working with the county and area cities, too. So there's some agreement that this is a good firm to work with, and we are all going to be touched by this project because we all live on the river or are impacted by the river. So that's encouraging as well.
Yeah, agree. Commissioner, anything to add? All right. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution approving the Green Infrastructure Portfolio Standard Policy, which is a mouthful.
So moved. Support.
All right. Moved and supported.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Carrie Revett from Environmental Services. And what we lovingly refer to as the GIPS policy, because it's much easier to say. We've been working on this for a long time. It's taken culmination of a lot of policies, Green Grand Rapids, aligning with our Vital Streets, and then going through our Stormwater Oversight Commission. So Elaine Isley from our Stormwater Oversight Commission is going to give you the highlights of it.
Great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A little static there. So yeah, the policy, very briefly, is looking to input a goal of capturing 1% of the first flush, that first inch of rainfall. We are on line to track that already because we are capturing more than that with the installation of large projects like Joe Taylor Park and Mary Waters Park. So the Stormwater Oversight Commission has approved this policy. We're recommending it for adoption to this board here. And I do want to point out that this was a pilot, and we, the City of Grand Rapids and the City of Milwaukee, were the first two pilot cities to do this. Milwaukee has not approved theirs. We would be the first in the nation to have a green infrastructure portfolio standard. So I just wanted you to consider that, and thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on Vital Streets Oversight and Stormwater Oversight.
Absolutely.
All right, commissioners, questions about this?
I'm commenting a lot this morning. Sorry about that. But I just think it's a tribute to WMEAC that you have educated us that stormwater is the number-one source of pollution in the Grand River and the Great Lakes, which is something that frankly, I didn't realize until your campaign. So this is great if we can capture it and filter it to the ground. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for Lefenwell Holdings, Inc. at 640 Lefenwell Avenue Northeast.
So moved. Support.
All right. So John O'Shea, you can tell us about this. But commissioners, we had a public hearing about this project. I think we're all, all of our questions were answered, as well as hearing from the owner who's really working hard to make this project come to fruition. So, John?
That's great. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, commissioners. So since you're very familiar with this project, I'll just give a brief overview real quickly. So this is a request to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district and approve a 10-year tax exemption for the Lefenwell Holdings, Inc. project, which is related to Hex Armor, a local company currently located on Oak Industrial Drive. Just for everybody's benefit, this is again a performance-based incentive where there is no benefit derived until the investment is made, and the benefit to the company is a reduction in the increase in taxes that will result from their investment. So a recent partnership between Hex Armor and German-based UVAC Safety Group is driving this growth. They plan to invest over $4 million into the property and create approximately 50 good-paying jobs over the next several years. So this is the final step in the local approval process, and if approved, we would forward on to the state for their issuance of the exemption.
Great. Commissioners, any questions or comments about this?
This is a great project, all around.
Yeah. And it's in the second ward, which I remember Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Kelly.
I drive by it regularly.
All right. I will, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. And this next item is a companion piece. So this is a resolution approving a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for the same property located at 640 Lefenwell. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right. Anything else to add, commissioners?
I'd just like to point out, we talked about this the other night, that their average hourly wage is a living wage at $23.70. I do think that we ought to start finding out the range, you know, the lowest amount at top, so that we aren't just looking at an average, but really happy about these. I think about former Commissioner Lumpkin's whenever I see these things through because he would always take these and then push them out in the community to let people know about upcoming jobs.
Yeah. Yeah, which is exactly what we should be doing as well.
Yes, yeah.
All right. I was just thinking about Commissioner Lumpkin's. Saw him the other day. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution approving adoption of Vision Zero approach to eliminate traffic-related serious fatalities and injuries.
So moved. Support.
All right. So Kristen is here to tell us about this.
Good morning, Mayor and commissioners. We actually have the next four items, and they're all interrelated, but we introduced them back in October, and then we've gone through Mobile GR Commission in November and again back in January for more discussion, as well as a number of other steps along the way, whether it's the Vision Zero or the next three items. So I don't know if you want to talk about them all together or do them individually.
Commissioners, do you have a preference to talk about them together or separately? Together?
Together's fine.
Together. All right. Unanimous.
Yeah. So the umbrella item is the Vision Zero Resolution. This was a recommendation out of the Vital Streets Plan, and the idea is to create a sort of overarching approach to transportation safety that's both rated-driven as well as interdisciplinary. It's something that you're seeing around the world, as well as around other cities in the United States. And so kind of set that tone and then move forward with various departments within the city, as well as some partners, I think, outside the city would be important to include. And that sort of takes our next steps forward on trying to improve transportation safety as we definitely are starting to see more challenges locally as well as nationally with crash histories. So that would be the Vision Zero. And then we had some other companion pieces that were responding to some specific complaints, change to Chapter 51 to require basically traffic control plans for pedestrians and people on bicycles during construction in their public right-of-way so that we can maintain their access during that. And then the other item would be Chapter 181, which would be to require pedestrians or motorists to yield to pedestrians, change it from stop or yield to stop, a little less ambiguous, and uncontrolled crosswalks, whether they're marked or unmarked. And then the final item, which we'll bring up with Asante Kane, who worked hard on that as well, is arts in the public right-of-way policy, which is a little bit separate from the three safety items.
All right. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions?
Well, I will say that I serve on the Mobile GR Commission and that where, first of all, Vision Zero is so important, I think it's important to recognize that these are even unmarked crosswalks. I've had questions about that. So if somebody's crossing the street, we stop. Period. Sadly, we all went to a funeral last week for a person we admire, John Canova, who was hit by a car at a crosswalk. And Commissioner Schaefer, we were having a goodbye for him, which is why I think all of us felt that we really needed to attend that funeral and mourn that passing in that situation. But it is a clear example of why we need to be aware and work on saving lives in the city. And then finally, the third policy you referenced about the art in the crosswalks, it's not going to get people to where they really want to be because there are some federal standards and there is no proof one way or another whether or not they actually slow traffic or even do the opposite. So we are taking a cautious first step, but it's a first step. So just so that you're aware, you might want to take a look at that policy because I know I got a lot of input from residents in my ward wanting to do this. And if you want to familiarize yourself with what can and can't be done, I think that would be wise, commissioners.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, commissioners, any other questions, comments? All right. This is a priority. I'll just echo that. We want to be a really safe place for pedestrians and cyclists, and we want to be a walkable city, so this will help us get there. All right. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to an ordinance amending Chapter 181, general traffic regulations require vehicle operators to stop. Yes, you can stay right there. Even though we talked about all three, we still have to vote on them separately. And this is an ordinance, so this will require vehicle operators to stop for pedestrians in uncontrolled crosswalks.
Support.
All right. Commissioners, any additional comments or questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. And then the third one, which is also tied to this, and that's an ordinance amending Chapter 51, streets to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle safety and access in the public right-of-way during construction.
So moved. Support.
All right. And this, too, has been talked about at length. Any additional questions or comments, commissioners? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Thank you for your work on this. Also, please give our thanks to the full Mobile GR Commission. I know they've been working on this for months. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution approving changes to City Commission Policy 1100-06 called Arts, Memorials, and Related Gifts.
So moved. Support.
All right. Mr. Kane, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to try to get through this without coughing. Let's see. So one of my responsibilities is the staff person that is the liaison to the city manager's Arts Advisory Committee. The Arts Advisory Committee has looked at the revisions of this policy, and they are in support of it. So what this, what that committee does is when people want to donate art to the city, this body, this advisory committee, makes a recommendation of whether or not the city manager should accept that art. Amendment to this policy strengthens criteria and procedures regarding public art, including acceptance of art in memorials to be city-owned and murals visible from the public right-of-way. One thing that we've done recently, there's the mural on, at Madcap Coffee on Fulton. I don't know if you had a chance to see that, but I think that's representative of the work and the opportunity to make place here in the city. And it's good work, and it's work that hopefully you will strengthen by revising this policy. So I'll be talking a little bit about the public art piece, and then Kristen Bennett will circle back around and talk about the crosswalk piece. So early in 2017, the Arts Advisory Committee began the process to revise this policy. The revisions added new language to the 2006 policy that addressed the increased temporary art that was a part of our city due to Art Prize, which has also raised the awareness of the importance of public art here in the city. Further, recent court cases regarding signs in the public right-of-way caused us to want to update this policy. So this provision sets the framework for further enhancement that will be spelled out in an administrative policy. So there's more work to do. We have to figure out what we're going to require as far as any type of endowment. That's still a question that is an important question that still needs to be figured out. Also, Kristen might mention this, but regarding the street art, we will, we will take every opportunity to notify people if their, if their pieces are going to be tore up because of construction or for any other reason that we have to be in the street to tear up someone's work. So we will do that. I just want to assure people that that'll be a part of the process, the intake process. We will notify the applicants about if their art's going to be damaged or moved or have some other impact. So that's it for my piece. So I'll turn it over to Kristen to talk about the crosswalk piece.
Oh, Asante. I'm sorry, there's a question.
Oh, excuse me.
So maybe you can tag him and stay up.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll see if other commissioners have questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Linier.
Thanks, Asante. Are you sick? Is that why you were hoping to get?
I am sick. I have a cold and I have all types of stuff going on.
Sorry to hear that.
And we're all going to get sick.
Right. Now we know who to stay away from. Just a quick question. So during Art Prize, there were provocative pieces that were installed down in the Calder internally inside of the building. And I think we had to place signs, parental advisory signs around the art so that people would be aware when they entered into the space. And so I wonder if there had been any conversations around that through this committee and how does that, where is it in this policy that will address that?
So any art that's going to be on city property is vetted through the Arts Advisory Committee. The Arts Advisory Committee did take a look at the art that you're speaking of. It was their idea to put that disclaimer there, but we want to stay far away from any type of censorship. But the committee and the former city manager thought that the signs was an opportunity to let people know like what they were going to see when they, when they entered into the space.
So should the policy speak to provocative pieces and that, because it isn't, at least I didn't find that it was in there where it spoke to what would happen so that the public would be aware if they have a piece that they should still submit it and that it would go through this process. I think the other piece, too, is that the feedback that I received during the time when it was installed was that in light of it being Art Prize, that was kind of a unique situation where there was this obvious, you know, grand scale of art across the city. But there was also the idea that in public spaces where people may be coming without the plan of attending Art Prize with their children or whomever else, and then kind of walking into something as they're trying to pay a water bill.
Yes.
That was kind of an awkward position to put people in. So is the placement of that art also a part of the discussion as they're talking about the approval, where it's placed probably should be a part of that?
It is a part of, a part of the process. Where it's placed in that, in that particular situation, I don't know if that would have really helped.
Sure.
But in general, yes, the art, the location is a part, is a factor of the decision of whether or not to accept the art.
Okay.
I would say, though, that the temporary nature of Art Prize, I think the committee feels, and the spirit of the committee is that we're going to be a little bit forgiving, for lack of a better word, as far as, flexible would be a better word, when it, when it comes to the temporary nature of Art Prize.
Sure.
So something's going to be here for two weeks is different than those same pieces being there permanently. So that was part of the discussion.
Sure. I would agree with that because it also, you know, everybody's on notice that and would probably deduce that art would be in this building during that time. But in other instances, they're less likely to be aware of that, so.
To your original question, if you want to add the piece about provocative nature and that there's some opportunity for, or some responsibility for us to make people aware, I guess the one thing, though, is, you know, who's to say what's provocative? And that might be a struggle for the committee.
One, if I could, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we also, for the, for this installation particularly, there is a curator, and we have a curation agreement with a person that does that. So they're actually assembling the show and selecting it. So a way to maybe address this without working the policy is for that particular question that you raised, Commissioner, is deal with it in the curation agreement and say that, you know, provide maybe a little more direction to the curator about the type of art that we might be looking for.
Sure. Thank you.
And Tom is the grandfather of this. One of the reasons, hey, Asante, you got to get this up there.
Ow, you stepped up the grandfather. This wise soul of yours.
There's actually an administrative policy. They include clear criterias. Legally, there are only ways that we can guide in what pieces can be displayed on the public property, but there's an administrative guidelines that we worked with legal to actually create a clear guidelines to the staff and how they can review and to the committee.
Okay.
So there's actually a little document.
There is.
They actually is doing everything that you mentioned.
Okay. Thank you. Godfather.
Yes.
Grandfather, godfather, whatever it is.
Thank you, Godfather.
Is it godfather or grandfather?
Yeah, I call godfather better.
What's wrong?
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Asante and Tom. Sorry, Kristen, you can, you're burnt out.
To switch gears, part of the policy was to also cover the increasing number of requests that we're getting to do public art in this, in basically the street or public right-of-way on public sort of works assets. So Commissioner Kelly talked about the idea of artistic crosswalks. That one has a lot of, sort of some controversy across the country simply because of the regulations that we do follow, like every other city, with federal standards on pavement markings and signs and those types of things. And likewise, even though there's not been formal rulings from what we call the U.S. Access Board, which governs Americans with Disabilities Act, technical assistance and outputs, they have sort of cautioned cities to be aware that the crosswalk area is a, is an area that needs to be clear to persons with disabilities and that maybe changing that environment may be somewhat confusing to persons with some types of disabilities. environment may be somewhat confusing to persons with some types of disability. So we chose to be a little bit more cautious on the crosswalk opportunities, but at the same time, there's a lot of other locations within the public right-of-way that people can do decorative street painting or use other physical assets, like our traffic signal cabinets, which we've seen some already, as well as streetlight poles, public walls. We've even had conversations in Mobile GR Parking about using some of our spaces within parking garages and near surface parking lots, other things as opportunities for art. We've even with our bus stop project, we'll be talking about briefings, the idea, could they use those spaces at bus stops as painted carpets, if you will, of a, maybe it's a bus stop that can't have a lot of amenities, but something that can be attractive within neighborhood or business district environment. So the policy is there to kind of cover, and then the procedures to follow, I've worked on procedures in two other cities, is creating a staff-level procedure that people can input that's easy for them, whether it's a neighborhood association, a block club, a school, anyone who wants to come in and put together a policy or a proposal for art in the street or art on a public asset, and that there's a procedure for staff to walk through that process, and then the arts commission to take their action as well.
So there's a technical, a technical committee that's associated with the Arts Advisory Committee, and that technical committee will, will be the one, be the group that will say whether or not it's acceptable to have this art in the crosswalk or whatever it is. And before I forget, because I don't know if it was set up at the beginning, but I, we would be remiss if we did not mention Chris Salz and Suzanne Schultz, their help in getting some of this stuff together.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, questions? So I, so I'm curious, and I know all of us have probably seen this in other cities, where there's really interesting creative art in crosswalks. And I read all the materials, and I recognize there's federal guidelines that can be interpreted very rigidly, but clearly other cities throughout this country, and actually even in the state of Michigan, they're, they're being much more creative with art in crosswalks. So I'm just, I'm curious, the cities that are, are more open to, and actually, I think, encouraging of art in, in crosswalks, how do they reconcile this push that they have with these federal regulations that we always hear about?
In some cases, because I did a lot of research for the previous two jobs I had in other cities, some cases, they're just like, we don't really care what the feds say, and that their risk management and their attorneys are comfortable with that. And in other cities, they take a more cautious approach. So when I worked in Milwaukee prior to coming back to Grand Rapids, we chose to be somewhat more cautious. We had a few rogue installations in crosswalks, which had some positive feelings, and then in one instance, we had someone hit in one of those crosswalks and was very upset that it wasn't normal, and they had a lot of complaints, and there was concern about risk related to that. To them, they felt like that the only concern was putting art in a crosswalk as opposed to real safety. And so there was kind of a backlash that came out of that in that specific instance. So I definitely, there's not a lot of research one way or the other as to whether they enhance or detract, or they're just neutral in regards to safety. So I think one of the things is, we've always sort of focused, at least in my previous lives, that this is an opportunity to placemake first and foremost, and that, I think some of the things, too, is that we, I was getting a lot of requests to do placemaking in crosswalks or other things at my previous job, when in reality, they wanted to have a conversation about real safety challenges. And so I wouldn't want this to usurp, you know, someone saying, oh, we'll just do art, and that'll solve our safety issue. In reality, we might have tools that, that we can use to actually address that safety problem, and then allow them to still placemake in their neighborhood or the business district, too.
So this is, you feel like this is a middle ground?
I think it's a great starting point, and I'd like, hopefully it's like a glass half full, that we're going to have a procedure and an opportunity for people to walk through a clear process, much like when the Parklet process was established, instead of being sort of one-offs, you know, that are coming forward, there's something publicly available, people can understand how they can walk through a process, whether it is a formal business district that's more organized, or maybe it's just like said, it's a block club or a school that wants to get together and do some art in the intersection near their, their school or something. It's a process that most people can achieve without a lot of cost and a lot of sort of red tape, if you will, so.
Thank you. Did I see a hand over here? No? Commissioner?
I had one, but I think I'll pass.
Okay.
I've had enough of this, you know?
I aim into that. All right, anything else, commissioners? So, so thank you for your work on this. I really appreciate it. I feel like we've been talking about this for a very long time, and I remember when I was a commissioner, this was a topic that was brought up multiple times. Maybe not as much as fireworks, but it was brought up a lot. All right, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
Mayor, I'd also like to thank the team. Many of them are in the room. The Vital Streets Oversight Commission had a role in this as well, and so, and Mobile GR Commission. We got here with a good policy.
Okay, great, thank you. So commissioners, we are back in here at 11:00, correct, for briefings? We have two briefings before us today. They'll probably take an hour, so we have one on Cure Violence and one on Transit Stop